All right, it's six o'clock, so I will call the Select Board meeting to order. Today is Monday, June 26th, 6:00 PM. We are here in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. This meeting has Zoom access. It's being recorded for local access television, live and YouTube, as well as re-airing on local access. If we can start by saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I'm late, everybody?
Oh, we just started. We made it by the look of time. So, I will take a motion for minutes, treasury warrant, and payroll.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Um, for...
For...
June 12th?
June 12th.
Okay.
Second?
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Second and I.
Last and I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I.
Treasury warrant and payroll.
Make a motion to approve Treasury warrant 23-26 and payroll 23-PW-26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a question?
Yep.
Was there anything out of the ordinary on those? Nothing? Okay.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Second and I.
Last and I, recuse myself from cable access.
Ledger I.
Galvin I, excluding safe place.
Waitman I. And I just want to make a comment going for the approval of the executive session minutes, May 30th, 2023. If there's no comments on this, we are free to approve an open session, and the board can decide to release or not release at that time. So, I just wanted the board to know that if there's any questions or comments on it, we should hold them and discuss them in executive session. So, I would look for a motion to... I would be okay, sorry, to approve and release, but that's the board's discretion.
I make a motion to approve and release the executive session minutes, May 30th, 2023.
A second? Questions, comments, concerns, any reason to hold? Okay, roll call.
Second and I.
Last and I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I.
Thank you all. I wanted to just briefly start with some opening comments. Good evening. I can't believe we're already almost into July. That means that this Friday, July, or June 30th, the Rutland Fourth of July festivities begin, and it's a super-long and action-packed-filled weekend. So, the 30th, there will be the road race, Booty and the Jet Concert, and the bonfire over at Milk Room Brewing Company, starting at 5:00. Additionally, the Historical Society will be holding the Old Burial Ground Rededication Ceremony up here at the Old Burial Ground Cemetery, starting at 6:00 PM. Saturday is a full day of events, including the Junior Olympics volleyball tournament, bike and doll carriage parade, Historical Society Open House, and Lemonade Social, the Lip Sync, and the Midnight Riders Concert on the Common. All of that is up here, center of town memorial, in front of the churches on the Common. I think that morning starts around 9:00, 9:30. Sunday, from 11:30 to 3:30, is Family Day, with a town picnic on the Common, includes a magic show and some balloon animals, and a concert by Chuck and Mudd. Monday nights, the big night fireworks. Chicken barbecue starts at 4:30, the strawberry festival at 5:00. The band for the concert on the Common is The Flock. And then, of course, Tuesday, the 4th, is the Pancake Breakfast that starts at 8:00 AM, the Council on Aging over on Glenwood Road, and then the Beloved Parade. So, it's going to be an action-packed weekend, and hopefully everyone has a great time, and we see a lot of people out. We'll hope the weather holds. One other thing is we're getting into warmer weather, and kind of our agrotourism groups are starting to do some more activities. I just wanted to point everyone to the bylaw. There is an agrotourism, an agricultural accessory use bylaw. It's a zoning bylaw. It's through the Planning Board's website. I just wanted to point everybody to that. If there's questions or concerns about some of the events or activities going on, that's a good place to start, to see what's... Most of our... Everyone, I think, has been permitted through the accessory use bylaw, and that's really a Planning Board zoning thing. I know I went through the Fourth of July stuff quickly. That should be on our town website, and then hopefully linked to the Fourth of July website as well. So, that's all I have for tonight, I think. It's going to be a big, big weekend. I think we have some member announcements, some board and member announcements. So, Harry, did you want to?
Sure. You talked about the inter-office memo?
Yep.
We have an inter-office memorandum from the Board of Health to the Board of Selectmen about an increase in inspectional fee, inspectional fee increases. So, I'll read it. "The Board of Health discussed inspectional fee increases at their June 5th, 2023 meeting. After discussion, the board voted to increase Board of Health inspectional service fees by 10%, rounded up to the next $10, effective July 1st, 2023. The board also voted to increase Richard Stevens' health agent salary per inspectional fee by 10%, effective July 1st, 2023. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please feel free to reach out to our office. Thank you."
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yep.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to say the Board of Health is an elected board, so they're providing this as informational for us as well as the public, so...
I just need some clarifications. When you look at health agent salary per inspectional fee by 10%, that means every time they go out on an inspection, every inspection fee is increased to make up for the salary? I'm not sure what that means. Health agent's salary per inspectional fee by 10%? Does that mean that his...
No, I think, I just, candidly, I think it's just his rate increased by 10%. So, it's the same fee that is charged for each inspection, so they call that the per-inspection fee. So, if it's $100, it's now $110.
For the fee?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So, the extra $10 is going to go to his salary, so to speak?
Yes.
I guess they can do that without discussing with the Finance Committee and how it affects the budget of the town? I mean, it's not a lot, but still.
Yeah, so I think within their authority, they have the authority to set their fees. And it's also paid through the revolving fund.
I was going to say it's a revolving fund that's paid strictly through your inspection fees, so it has no time for the general budget.
Okay. I thought I saw that in here, but I just... Okay, thank you. Now for the big announcement. The Rutland Takeover Night. July 27th at 6:45 PM, Polar Park in Worcester. It is our town's time to shine. The hometown hero, first pitch, is going to be thrown out by Police Sergeant Ronald Freiberg, who's been a member of the police force for many, many, many years. Who's going to bring the game ball to the mound? Winston Carter. Who's going to do the ceremonial first pitch? Dylan Cleary and Russ Almstead. So, I'm sure those families will be there, so... And then, who's going to say play ball? It's going to be Brendan Horner, Reagan O'Hearn, Peyton Crosby, Carter Wilder, or Wilder, and Jason Briggs. I think the town would look forward to having such a great night. So, please, join Rutland as we go to Polar Park for that night in honor of us. And I believe, although it's not here, I believe the Wusocks are going to make a contribution that we had talked about earlier to a charity on their Wusocks night.
Yes, so the residents of Rutland will be going to hold this year. So, a certain percentage of the tickets sales will go towards that charity. And also just to share, the Wusocks sponsored one of our concerts on the Common as well.
Wow, great.
So, they've been great participants, and they send smiley over when they can. And I just wanted to let the public know as well, as far as choosing the names. I put out a form to the residents asking them to nominate, and then some people, and we put all those names in, and we just randomly chose to keep that there for everybody. And I reached out to all these families to confirm that they wanted to participate, and they did. And for anybody interested, the link to buy the tickets is on the homepage of our website right now, and they're going to see the Rutland folks together that day.
Great.
I have one more comment on that, so I, well, not anymore, but I used to live very close to Polar Park, so I went to a lot of games. Went to one this year in the town of Natick. He's currently the record holder for attendance for Town Takeover Days, so those who intend on participating and attending...
Are you throwing it down, Austin?
If we can beat Natick.
Throwing down.
Thank you, Harry. Do any other members have any comments or announcements or anything that they'd like to bring attention to? Okay, I'll move into public comment.
All right, you all said, before you, hold it low. Sorry, no list of yet, but I will get that 3, 5, 8, or 9. Anyway, say, I remember a question that was asked about the grid. Does the town have enough kilowatt for future growth? Did you ever get an answer about that? And the other thing is the... About the utilities, National Grid Horizon doing maintenance on tree growth over, you know, the utility wires. Does anybody in town have any... You might say communications with them about that? I feel it's time to push this, because I'll skip the rest of it, because, well, I won't, because as far back as Carl Jr., DPW Director at the time, Hal Krujshson, and I think that was like about 40 years ago, so at least. He wanted a grader with an over-the-guy rail mower, which he could do the bank and everything else, because the work crew was thin at that time. And I have to say, they, the Highway Department, really had the roads always cut back. Nothing ever grew out like they are at this point to this. I'm afraid. I'm just afraid, because when's the last time we got a hurricane? Approximately 30 years ago, maybe? And how many people know what it's going to be like in this town? What devastation we're going to have? You know, we do get a couple of hurricanes, and don't forget, the trees are always nice for the westerly breeze, but you get an easterly or southeastly breeze, and over they go easy. So, I know that Joe Buckley, when I talked to him about doing forestry cutting and all that, he wanted the money from that two-hire tree guy to get out there and to do some cutting and clean up. So, next time you're driving, especially 56, down towards 68, take a look. It may be on this side of the hill, but when the wind blows, it doesn't matter. You notice how many trees are hanging over the wires, and that's where our second source of power comes from, from 68, they come out of Westminster. And to me, you know, you can't always count on, you know, up by Treasure Valley and a small substation over there. That one is in terrible shape, so... I would hope that sometime in the future, somebody would get ahold of someone and have a good discussion, because I feel that I don't want to see devastation in this town, the people, without, like, those people weeks. Amen. Carry on.
Did you have a comment, Austin?
Yeah, so just to follow up to, I know it brought this up at a previous meeting, so I did follow up with DPW. We do have a mower with a, or tractor with a side mower attachment. When I first went in there, it was all over the shop. They're actually repairing it. And they're actually waiting for two or three more parts, and that mower will be back in operation. They'll be able to do some of that mowing work on the side of the roads. As you know, we also do have a regional, regionally shared bucket truck. That bucket truck is in the shop right now, as the town of Hubbardston, let's just say there was a, an accident. So, the bucket truck is in the shop and is in need of repair. So, there's some delays, not only for Rutland, but also the other partners with that truck. And then also, you mentioned that the previous DPW Director was looking for some funds. The FY24 budget that's upcoming does have some funds and a forestry budget to be able to contract out for some tree work as well, so... Hopefully, some good news, especially on some of the equipment. And then obviously with the new budget, we have some resources to be able to take care of some of those responsibilities as well.
Just to let you know, the one that he, Kyle Krujshson was looking at, had a long boom.
Yeah.
And where the other one is just a...
Promoting.
...over the guy rail type of thing, and that's about it.
Austin, maybe we can try to have a meeting with National Grid also to address the capacity questions that have come up with the new growth, especially kind of on the southwestern side of town, as well as if they plan to do more tree clearing and everything. I know a few years ago, a lot of homeowners got letters in the mail that grid was going to go through and trim trees, but I think it's been a few years. I don't know if they do parts of town, or if they just haven't done Rutland recently. But especially with this winter, with all the ice and heavy wet snow, I know there's still some branches that are really overpower lines and stuff, so... Yeah.
I just, I appreciate you bringing that up, Dick, because I've been wondering what effect all the solar panels going on the houses in Rutland would have effect on the level of the energy that Verizon is providing. So, although we built a lot of houses, there are a lot of houses that have solar, because who was it? I think it was a building inspector said, "I go out on more solar than I do anything else." So, it'd be interesting to see how, how the electric stacks up in that level. I'd like to see some graphs or parameters on that, just to see where we are with them.
Especially at nighttime.
Well, you know...
No, I'm joking.
You're sleeping mostly, so... But yeah, I'd like to see that, so appreciate your comment on that.
Any other public comments?
Oh, one more thing. Just, I don't know, can we talk about our goals in terms of the trees and the looking at possibly the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan? That takes into consideration all that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we, at our, yeah, you can say, I mean, at our goals and objectives meeting, Harry brought up really investigating the municipal vulnerability plan and doing work on that, and we can try to incorporate, see how the tree piece incorporates in also with climate change and everything.
Thanks.
We don't need to admit shade trees anymore, because we don't have horses walking up and down the roads.
Any other public comment? Okay. We have a public, a public hearing for a common VIC license, or is it brichette provisions and eatery at Schultz Farm, 163 Maple Ave? I think in our packet, Tamika has included some information. It's a new license, although that facility had been licensed previously. It was licensed with a, with the entity that was there previously and not the farm. So, they worked, brichette worked with Board of Health and our department heads to go through the licensing process. Okay.
I think he's here. I think he is here.
Justin, is that you? Are you on iPhone? Can you hear us?
I'm not on an iPhone, but I can hear you.
Oh, okay, so you are there. You're a black screen to us. That's okay.
Oh, there we go. Sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you for coming in or zooming in.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'm just there.
I don't know if the board has any questions. I wanted to thank you, Justin, for going through the licensing process and everything. I know there was some miscommunication and everything on that for, from kind of the processing side of everything. So, I appreciate you going through. Through it with us.
Thank you, guys. The issues or misunderstandings were 100% on my end for not, you know, just kind of taking people's words for things instead of actually just going and meeting with the proper people. So, I appreciate everything that you guys in the town and Tamika and everyone has done to help with this process. So, thank you, guys.
Well, we welcome you to Rutland.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good luck.
Does the board have any questions or comments or anything, and anything for Justin? Hearing none, then I would take a motion. Oh, sorry, a motion to close the hearing. I'm sorry.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? I guess I should, before we actually close, I should ask the public if there's any, sorry, sorry, Justin. Is, from the public, are there any questions, comments, concerns about the application process? Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so I'll take a roll call to the closing of the hearing.
Second and I.
Last and I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I.
And then, if there's no additional conversation, I would take a motion to approve the common VIC license.
Make a motion to approve the common VIC license for brichette provisions and eatery at Schultz Farm, 163 Maple Ave, Rutland.
A second? Motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? Roll call.
Second and I.
Last and I.
Ledger I.
Galvin I.
Waitman I.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. Appreciate it.
Look forward to stopping by.
I look forward to seeing you. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving in to department head updates. We had our treasure collector, Rebecca Tuttle, and our assessor, Amy Evanowski, asked to come in to give us an end-of-year update, which I really appreciate. So, thank you for seeking us out and getting put on the agenda. I appreciate that. Floor is yours.
We just wanted to come in, kind of give you, give you where we're at. We're, we're, end of 4th of July. For everybody else, it's a party. For us, it's like, oh, close the year and start a new one. So, it's just a lot of work going on. Like, on the treasurer's side, we're working on payroll certifications and the accrual balances, getting everything set up for the next year. And we actually transferred all our employees over to the new Harvard Field of Health. They should be getting their new cards in the mail if they, excuse me, signed up for that. So, those are some of the treasurer things we're doing. But we are, this week, your FY24 preliminary bills will be going out. They'll be in the mail, with quarter one is due August 1st, and quarter two is due November 1st. They'll both be in one mailing. The process went very smooth. Preliminary bill, the preliminary bills, the bills that we're sending out are based on the, for people that don't know, they're based on FY23 bills that they have. They're estimated. And they actually add, we're adding 2.5%, which is the override amount, not the override amount, but the, the, what's the word? The prop 2.5, the 2.5% to them. Just to, it's the amount that we're increased that we rolled out. So, those, when the override goes through, that'll be included in the actual bills that'll go out in January. So, but I wanted to just recognize that the process with having and say thank you to having Amy here as a full-time assessor is, it's making improvements in things right now, you know, as, as we're moving ahead, and I want to thank you for supporting that. And it's going to, it's going to benefit the town, and I'll kind of let Amy say what she's been doing.
I'm very happy to work with Becky. She knows her stuff, and it makes everything so, so much easier, and we have a great relationship, and we get along really well, so we have no problems, and we sat together to the billing on both ends of the computer, so that was, you know, really good. Currently getting closed out for fiscal year, starting to calculate for new growth, starting to look at, you know, what's coming forward as far as, you know, getting some of the programs off. I really want to work up the exemption, the deferrals, and the senior work-off programs. That is my chore for August, after I clean and paint the office. Yeah, right, exactly. Next on my list. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well for the vote of confidence, and I'm so glad to be here all the time.
Thank you.
I think it's really going to benefit the town. I think they've, they've been out. I think somebody called today. It's like, I've lived here for 30 years, and nobody's come to see, you know, come around. So, they really are reviewing a lot of the...
I think I took about 12 parcels out of exempt status, which should not have been there. So, putting those back on tax rolls, I adjusted at least over 60 bills for things that, you know, just needed to be, new construction needed to be, you know, at the percentage it correctly was, and just making sure things are right. Chapter land, that should have been removed to fill the classification, and it still was in there. So, just trying to do those little updates as, as I go along. Almost everything I touch needs a little bit of a tweaking here or there, so it'll, it'll be good. I just have to prioritize, because of course I wanted all of them yesterday.
Well, thank you both, and Amy, thank you. The feedback I've gotten from the, the group going out and doing the inspections has been positive. The interactions have been positive. I'm sure that there's been some, some upset individuals, but I think that the majority people have been, the dialogue has been constructive and positive. So, I appreciate that. And I think it's a huge step forward for Rutland to really know what we have, and that we're assessing individuals at what, what we have, and so I...
Fair and equitable. That's all I want, is everybody gets their fair share assessed to them, and they pay their fair share. No more nor less. That's it.
And so, I appreciate that. And Becky, I know it's been a lot of work with everything, switching the insurances over and everything, as well as just end-of-year. And so, hopefully there, with the fiscal year '24 budget, there's a little bit of light in the tunnel that, that you'll get some extra hands on deck to help and move some responsibilities around to streamline. But I appreciate everything that both of you have done. May I ask a question? Is the official date where everything has to be closed out for the fiscal year '23, Ju-, July 30th? Or, I mean, obviously, we're not spending once June 30th hits, but we have some time to...
There's usually, there's two cleanup, this is really a town accountant thing, but there's, but there's two cleanup warrants that are done in July, like the first two. So, when you approve your warrants next, in the July meeting, you'll have warrant number 27 for FY23, and you'll have warrant number one in FY24. That warrant number one and 24 are like the insurances that we have to pay upfront, Worcester Regional's assessment, and there's a couple, just a few kind of big things that we pay upfront, July 1st, that's for the whole entire year. But then FY23, for all those bills that are just kind of rolling in a little bit, and there's two warrants, the 27 and 28, that will happen in July. And then, after that, it's hopefully everything's paid. So...
Thank you. Okay. That's good to know, because that was kind of one of my questions going into that, but yeah. Harry, did you have a question?
I do. Amy, when I was in your office, you mentioned to me about a special tax incentive for disabled veterans. I know you've been trying to reach out to that, but is there anything the board can do? Because I know that's a fully state-funded program. Doesn't cost us a dime.
No, we are reimbursed by the state. The Veterans Agent may be reaching out to them, or having him reach out to the veterans who he thinks might qualify, so we can get more folks in, because they might not even know that the program exists for them, you know? So, any, or anybody, anybody knows who's a veteran or a family member who's a veteran. I can only reach out to so many people, but since you folks live in town, definitely spreading the word to anybody who asks, hey, we have this. Soon as I get permission to do my own website, I'm putting all that up there. There's some great DLS videos on the prop 2.5, on the exemptions, on all kinds of stuff. So, I have a lot of visuals, and things are, you know, very easily, clearly stated, so that way, you know, hopefully, less... are, you know, very easily, clearly stated. So that way, you know, hopefully less questions and that kind of thing. I talked to Kylie today. We're gonna start working on that cost of living increase and getting that, all that paperwork started soon, so.
Just one more?
Yep.
Can you, do you have an idea? And if you don't, that's okay. Where do we stand percentage-wise of the increased appraisal going around to the number of houses where we've done the second, you know, appraised the property for tax purposes? Is it like 10%, 20%?
How many have we done so far?
Or percentage-wise? I mean, you know, we've got quite a few homes in town and some of them haven't been done for 10 years, I guess.
So we have 4,500 parcels in town. About 3,000 of those were out of date.
Okay.
So so far, I think we've gotten to maybe 450 parcels. Some of those are like land reviews that we can do in the office for vacant land and stuff like that. So some of them don't actually need a visit. But yeah, I think we're like 450, 500 right now. And we've only started in May. So between Mike and I, we're both going in there and doing all that we can and just trying to update all that visit history.
So if the appraisal goes in, most of these tax increases, if you will, won't take effect until?
24, you probably see. I probably won't get the data entered. I just don't have enough manpower in my office to be able to do that. Mike will update the visit history. He'll put in a new photo. But if any, like, new features or sketches or anything like that, I do it myself. So I, it's not in my budget to hire anybody yet to help me. So that is something I'm looking forward to doing in the future. But right now, all of my staff are pretty much strapped doing exactly what they're doing. So I just keep going from pile to pile and just trying to put as much stuff as I can. So to answer your question, most likely 24, maybe even 25. Those updates will be seen.
I guess I'm sitting here thinking, getting it done quicker is less painful than dragging it out, particularly from a town perspective. It says, well, you had an extra year where you didn't have to pay taxes because I got mine.
Sure.
So the sooner we get it done, I think the more favorable to the citizens of the town.
I agree. The only one problem is, is we have to not, we can't enter into the database between June 30th and July, January 1, because it's assessment as of January 1. So after we close out for the fiscal year, growth will stop being entered until January 1, and then I can start entering it again between January and June.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
I think we've made a lot of progress. We started in March and we've made, where are we? Three, four months later, we've made a lot of progress. So I just wanted to say that this is a win-win for.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Questions, comments for? Thank you both for coming in. I appreciate the update and good luck finishing out the year. Thank you. Moving on to the town administrator update.
Good evening. Thank you. Just want to, Jamie left to hear this, but just wanted to give a shout out to the finance team led by Amy, Becky and Donna and the rest of their staff. This is a busy time of the year, closing things out and getting a new year started. And I have a lot of confidence in our team to be able to do that. And looking forward to the new year, working with all of them. There's a lot of exciting initiatives that I know that they're all, you know, working very hard on. So you have a good team here financially. Madam Chair, you stole my thunder on the June 30th ceremony. We did publish the full schedule of the 4th of July events on the front page of the town website that, as you mentioned, does link to their site as well. I just want to thank again the Eagle Scout Project and the volunteers that assisted with those projects as well. And so we are looking good for the transition to Vadar for our accounting system. Town accountant kind of gave me a demo of the software system last week. It looks great. I think overall the reporting and functionality of our accounting operation will be a lot smoother and more efficient and also the reports that are sent to the board. I think there's a lot more that we can do that I'm looking forward to presenting to you and the finance committee and the greater community as well. I have a long list of hiring announcements and news for you. So I think you had mentioned, I had shared in an email and also to the public, we've promoted Elizabeth DeFoss to Deputy Dispatch Director. Liz has been a longtime employee and looking forward to her assistance in leading that department at, obviously, regional initiative. We talked a lot about training and some improvements on the overall operation, which I think are critical for such an essential operation. So I'm looking forward to the great work that Liz and Mike will be doing for the dispatch operation. We are conducting finalist interviews for the town planner position this week. Some great applicants that I think will have some great experience that is relevant to some of the needs of the community and helping out Planning Board, Economic Development Commission and staff in the greater community for the planning office. We'll also have an appointment confirmation for your next select board meeting, hopefully for the town planner, but most likely for the Public Works Director. So that should be an exciting meeting to introduce some new folks to the board. The fire and police departments have engaged MRI consultants to assist with the lieutenant and deputy fire chief search. They will be utilizing some of the savings and salary costs for the first three months with likely a start date in September for the leadership of those departments. So MRI will assist with the recruitment process, but also conducting an assessment center, which is very common in public safety positions, assessment center for those positions. We have also advertised the vacant position for the chief water operator. Per the collective bargaining agreement, it is posted internally for 10 days. So looking at internal applicants first for that position, that position, just in sum, is kind of a leadership for the water department to help with a lot of the, not only managing the day-to-day, but also some strategic oversight of the water department as well. The Conservation Commission posted the conservation agent position. So we've started receiving applications for that part-time position and will likely start conducting interviews within the next two weeks for that position. And then the budget also funded some additional positions, like human resources coordinator, a payroll clerk. So we'll be posting those over the next several weeks as well. You probably noticed, over the weekend, downtown was very busy. The community pool opened last week. It's my understanding, it was crazy this weekend. Parking, of course, is a premium when you are attending events downtown. I noticed that today. And summer camp starts tomorrow. They actually had the orientation for all the camp counselors in town hall today. So introducing all counselors to the program and welcome them and welcome all the campers as well for summer camp. It should be an exciting summer. Started working with Safe Place and the schools to prepare a bid package for the playground renovation project that I think has been kind of talked about for a few months and we're looking to get that started. At least out to bid. And then also bids will be due for the Watrusis Street project that we mentioned at the last meeting. Those are due this Wednesday. So we'll do some bid evaluation and award to the lowest bidder for that project. So some progress on there. And then I also just want to thank the Agricultural Commission for inviting me and hosting a Chapter 61 informational session at Lilac Hedge. It's very informative. They invited staff from DCR and some other agency that I'm forgetting now. But it was very informative. Several members of the community and neighboring communities attended the program. Do you remember?
East Quavon Land Trust.
East Quavon Land, thank you, Dave. It was great. They also served ice cream. We got to see the ibus and all the other animals, farm animals. It's really a great program, I think, for the community and very helpful for property owners. So it was very informative for me and I know some other folks that attended. Amy also attended to kind of give the expertise from the assessor's office as well. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
Any questions for Austin?
Oh, one more. Sorry. I also, I gave a shout out on our social media, but I just want to give a shout out to the AAA All-Stars for winning against Clinton last night. I ran into them at a restaurant. But also. Yeah.
Can't get away, Austin. You can't get away.
But also, I was reminded that the 12U softball All-Stars softball team went 5-0 when they're playing in the district final tomorrow, district championship tomorrow, 8:00 PM at the Vernon Hill Fields. So want to congratulate the members of those respective teams, thank them for their hard work. And yeah, go Rutland.
Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations to Rutland youth baseball and softball. It's exciting.
Oh, they played a hard game. Beat Clinton up.
Thank you, Austin, for everything. Moving into old business. We were maybe gonna have asked to hold, but I see Randy's here to discuss the Boy Scout Troop 141 request for a bench on the town common to honor Ron Marsh. So in going through some of our policies, it came to light that we do have a town policy on naming and dedication of town property. We historically have not recognized, we've only used this for naming like squares and actual parcels of land. And so we wanted to include it for the board, for the conversation piece. I think there was conversation originally on the location of the bench, whether it was going to go in front of the war memorial, which I think the board was kind of not amenable to. The other proposed location from Boy Scouts was farther back on the common, kind of in that arc of the other two benches on the common. And we had asked just to hold it going until this meeting. So the policy for naming and dedicating of town property requires an application and eventual town meeting approval. Like I said, historic, this is a fairly new policy. I think it's been since the end of 2022. Shirley Warren Square. So yeah. So if I, Randy, did Boy Scouts have a proposed location? Is it still the, on the town common? Is that where Boy Scouts is hoping? Or is Boy Scouts amenable to what the board is considering? Or?
So I'll just tell you a little bit of background where I wasn't here last time. I apologize for the getting. So Ron Marsh had three, a longtime resident, huge community support. To the best of my knowledge, never selectmen or anything town-driven. He's all just a great guy. Money was given to the Boy Scouts, Congregational Church and the Lions Club. Longtime community member for Boy Scouts as a whole. We tried to turn the, tie the church into it and being a community leader as a whole. So we thought about several things, but one of the things that are on our top three list is to do a granite bench of some sort to comment, to enjoy the band concerts, be close to the church that he's involved in, help with the Lions Club, the whole nine yards. So in turn, we talked about doing a bench. And there's different options of benches unknown to me. When I left one up com, we wanted to do it on the common. We talked about in front of the congregational church, but we felt it would be a lonely dog there by itself because there's no other benches there at the moment. There's a Christmas tree, there's a monument there as a whole. We thought about moving it on the upper common or in front of the town halls as a whole. We currently have two benches on the common, to the best of my knowledge, for the Alvin Ovi brothers that are on the common there that are black with a bench in the back of it, right? You also have another bench in front of the police station. And I know there's some concern about state property, town property, et cetera, right? But I'm not here to discuss that. As a whole, John Sanji matches the Alvin Ovi benches as a whole. I've done some homework and I've got prices on what a black bench engraved would cost. And it's more than it's allowed within our budget. I talked to Joanne Sanji as well to see where she got it from. I called Granite Group. They've been very poor to get back to me, but I spoke to somebody else for the same thing as a whole. In turn, I wanted to look at other options. The other option that we had considered, and if we went with a black bench, it was, if we could afford it and you guys so chose to permit it, my view was if you're standing on Main Street facing the town hall on your, there's two benches right now and they're between two trees. And if you go to the third tree location over, it would look like it was designed to be there. It wouldn't be out of place, in my opinion, right? You may say it's too close to Route 56. I think it's closer to the church. So I mean, pros and cons, right? And then, to the best of my knowledge, with the previous homework that I had done, the granite bench would be cheaper than the black polished bench as a whole. So I want to look at that as an option of funding from the memorial donations that were given to us. And I genuinely think down deep, Ron wouldn't want us to spend a ton of money because he'd rather see us give the money to the scouts for canoe or hiking or something on that behalf, right? So we got to keep that in mind. So the memorial on the common, and why I went there was a Boy Scout from Rutland, from the Leicester Troop, did that here a number of years ago. And I reached out to him, thanks to Tamika, got me his contact. I sent him an email and said, hey, would you mind if we put a bench on there for a scout leader on there? It's not really his to say yes, but in my opinion, it was his project. He did the patio around it. He put two benches there. And it's a diamond shaped. And there's a diamond that fates Main Street and then fates the gazebo with nothing on it. There's a walkway that goes to Main Street. And on the two corners on the side, there are currently granite benches with no back. Cheaper bench as a whole to do it. And then my proposal was to put a granite bench on this side facing the gazebo so you could sit on, it didn't matter which the name, whether to the memorial or to the granite. But then you could sit and watch the bandstand and have an opportunity to do that, but there'd be recognition there. There's discussion about putting it on the seat where your rear end would be versus where the back of your legs would be because you could put more on there. We talked about doing a Boy Scout logo for Ron Marsh, the forever Boy, the forever Rutland Scout, something to that effect we were going to do. So that was our proposal. I understand that Ron wasn't probably part of the military, but we're being a Boy Scout project. It wasn't on the memorial monument itself. It was on the patio area there. I thought it was a reasonable request to have either of that. Both of the benches, after doing our homework, may be out of our budget to do it, but I am still asking for permission to consider it on the common. And if you say no, then we'll go a different direction. But if you say yes, it may still not happen because we may not have enough funds to do it. I can answer any questions.
Through the chair.
Please.
Randy, now, correct me if I'm wrong, the Fire Brigade, the building, is your intention someday to turn that into a museum?
Yes.
And that building is kind of the unofficial, would you say, Rutland headquarters for Boy Scouts or?
Troop 141's charter org rep is Rutland Fire Brigade.
Right.
Recently, they have met there because of the challenges with the school during COVID. And they were at the farm and then we went there for a classroom setting this possible winter that we could do that. We did consider putting, there's four or five benches out in front of the fire station, the old fire, the old fire station, the Fire Brigade, that were sold as fundraisers to physically do that. And I, there is empty ones over there. I bought one with Darren Ross. So I bought a bench and I believe, can't tell you this for sure, but I believe the bench cost us $5,000. But that $5,000 is just a granite bench with two posts and no back to it. The challenge is that's more than the benches that I'd like to put on the common to do it. And that's more of the fundraiser for the Fire Brigade. So they may give us a break to put that there, but I'm not certain of how that would physically work. But there are other non-fire department members that have made donations to do that. It's something that has been considered.
Right. Yeah, I was just thinking where, you know, this is a dedication to this gentleman and his dedication to the Boy Scouts. And if down, looking down the road, where right now, you know, very few people go up there because, you know, it's just not used as much. But someday.
If it was paved, it would be used quite a bit.
And someday it will be paved, Randy. But, but down the road, I mean, looking into the future, if we're able to someday turn that into a museum, you know, get the elevator and, I mean, it would be nice to have something, to be part of the museum and people could see. You're gonna be going up to to see that and you could learn about Mr. Marsh and his dedication to the Boy Scouts and how Rutland Fire Brigade played a role in that. And, I mean, that to me, sounds like a nice story. That to me, you know, and again, I don't know, that's.
It's been considered because of the, what I had heard of some of the other things. I'm just worried about the cost, right?
Oh, yeah, costs. Yeah, absolutely.
You know, whether I do a park bench there or a park bench there, it's still gonna cost me the same as the Fire Brigade gives us a break. It's just, I don't know whether I can do it, I guess. I just think today. I just think today in current times, the comm- the common is used more often than that particular area up there. That's.
Right, today, right. But down the road, hopefully, that's, that'll be a nice, nice area, you know?
I mean, I don't know how, what the rest of the board is thinking. I know originally we kind of were um thinking since Mr. Marsh wasn't military service, that having it a bench for him near the memorial was maybe not the route that we wanted to go. Um, I know, I personally have heard some feedback, um, concerns about putting an additional bench on the town common and breaking up traffic flow and everything there. Um, I, for me personally, don't necessarily see that. I, I see a third one kind of balancing out that arc, but then do we run into the risk of more benches and more benches and more benches? Um, I think at one point there had been a, a wooden bench down here on the common in front of the library. Um, I think that it has gone through disrepair and it's no longer there. I know that for sure. Um, so I know that there's not really anything down here on these commons in front of the church and library. Um, I also know that the food trucks and stuff tend to set up down there um more and more on kind of off nights. Um, and I know part of the town center study and master plan was ways to kind of create additional seating just in general in town center, and that includes both commons, not one or the other, and providing an opportunity for people to, to come and have community, maybe get a coffee or pizza or, or something and enjoy a simple conversation and, and time together on the benches. So I don't know what the, the board is thinking, and it sounds like cost is definitely a concern for us and for Boy Scouts and for everyone, so.
I have a question. The Boy Scouts have been a very integral part of Rutland. I was one as a kid growing up. Have you thought about making a Boy Scout memoriam, so to speak, or a whole section, say, in front of the uh the church about just for Boy Scouts because they've been such an important factor in this town of Rutland? I mean, we still have Boy Scouts, you know? That's, that's the thing. And we're teaching them good skills and good civic pride, so something like that. Have you ever thought about that? And the bench would be a start with everything else? I don't know.
Haven't considered it. I think this is the first time in my tenure of being involved with them. Fire Brigade has been, they're sponsors since the beginning, and I believe the Rutland Boy Scouts is over a hundred years old as a whole. Uh, this may be the first, certainly in my time, that they, we had memorial contributions come to us, right? It wasn't probably more than ten years ago, the Boy Scouts didn't have much of a treasury uh to do much of anything. You can say what you want about COVID, but certainly COVID helped uh Boy Scouts slingshot forward in fundraising through their bottles and cans that they do on the first Saturday of the month. Everybody sat home and drank soda or other alcohol containers that they brought us canned because they couldn't bring it back to the store either because of COVID, right?
Yep.
And we had done an awful lot there to build a, a system at the farm with conveyors and sorting and bins like that, that the boys have done extremely well, and they earn, the Boy Scouts earn scout dollars, right? So if they want to go on a camping trip, we're going to um, West Virginia here next, next week, and a lot of the boys don't have to pay for a two thousand dollar trip on their own because they were fortunate enough to have scout bucks to do it. So the Boy Scouts don't get all the funds, the committee doesn't get all the funds to do it. And very surprisingly to me, the cost of the boys to insure the boys to become a member of the Boy Scouts of America is over a hundred dollars per kid just for insurance for these kids. So it's similar to baseball and softball, right? There's a cost to play, right? And it's far more. So there isn't a lot of funds available to do that. Could we have a fundraiser? Possibly. It's a consideration. And Ron Marsh may be the, the great way to start that, right? Uh, that'd be the focal point and go from there. Yes, that's a, certainly something to be considered.
Okay, just throw that.
Thank you. Could I put an advertisement on the lower common? Just asking now, you know, it's saving a night.
So I guess there's.
Would it be, well, I don't want to be out of line, but would it be more practical if he wants to do something like that, that to look at the lower common versus the upper common?
I mean, I think, I think that definitely is a, a larger conversation if we're allocating a, a larger parcel of land for a, a group as a whole. I mean, I, we, I think the previous board, we tried to, uh, previous few boards tried to do the Rutland um naming dedication of town property policy to just make sure that there is an avenue so that all of town isn't suddenly named a piece of, of this person or that person or this group or that group. Um, and so I think if we're talking about designating a, a larger area of almost like creating a park or a memorial garden or something, that then that would definitely be a a much more involved process. Um, and even for, as far as the, the bench goes, in reading the policy, it's a public building, any structure, edifice, or other facility owned or maintained by the town. Is a bench considered, it's not considered a building, but is it?
I was gonna make the point, it doesn't, to me, what Randy's suggesting doesn't, this would not apply to the, the policy at hand. He's, it's a bench, a memorial bench. He's just looking for a place to, to display it.
Where I think, I mean, but I think if we were talking about a, a piece, a larger piece of land, that then we.
I think that's, it sounds like there's no, been no discussion, no plan, so I think that's something.
Right.
If, I think we should
Right.
focus on approval of where Randy's requesting to put the bench today in time. If there's a larger memorial, that needs to be discussed, a plan.
Yep.
Down the road. Is it possible, if wherever the bench goes down the road, if you do some sort of larger memorial, can those benches be moved? So it could always be if that were, were the case, so.
Yeah, I would agree with you a hundred percent, Jen. I don't, we're not doing a park. We're not doing a, it is, you know, we're not doing Ralph Anderson's intersection down here. We're just doing a park or something like that, right? Or, or Fred Warren's intersection over here as a whole. It's similar to the Eagle Scout project, just one to the old burial ground. We're putting in two pieces of granite. There's gonna be some names on it.
My, my personal opinion is if, if there's space that the board is willing to approve the, the upper common, that makes sense. I'm amenable to that. Again, it can be moved down the road if necessary. Um, thinking about, well, we want to add more seating to the lower common. That may be the case, but Randy's here. If that's the preferred location for his and that's okay, then there's, shouldn't be a reason for us not to approve it there just because we want to start more seating someplace else.
Just through the chair, just, just remember, we have these concerts going all the time now, and there is, you know, more and more people going to these things. So we have to take that, you know, think about that as well. Um, so I'm not against it. I just, I, you know, we, we need to, you know, when's the next bench coming? And the next bench, and the next bench, and, and.
Well, this is, yeah, this is part of the reason that I'm thinking that, okay, you know, when you mentioned the lower common down here, I don't think that's a bad idea at all, and I know that when my wife and I would walk a lot, we sat on the bench that was out here in front of the library, so, okay. So, you know, it was not a bad idea at all. In other words, you know, it gave us a, gave us a few minutes break and maybe so often somebody else would come along and sit down with us and talk, and, and it was, it was something that served a purpose, actually.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I gotta take a look at it because I'm not sure where the bench is. But I know one of the problems that, when I talk to people about it is the bench is a great idea, but if I set my chair behind it, will I be able to see anything? Because the bench will be higher normally than what the chairs are that are sitting. Uh, so I, I, I don't know. If you're sitting on that, can you see over? Cause you can't really move between them like you can with normal chairs, so I mean, I think the bench should be, be somewhere. I, I guess personally, I, I, I think from the historical perspective of Ron being part of a, I mean, how many organizations are a hundred years old in this town? In terms of doing, you have to be saying they were a hundred years old in this town? Yeah. So how, how do we do justice to that organization and Ron Marsh was a, so that, that's, you understand?
In regards to your comment there, you folks just gave out the run of a Moses Howell, where you gave out to Ron, and I happened to be on the common there in the beginning. There was an awful lot of people there at the time. If I remember correctly, there was people sitting on, um, uh, uh, two brothers, Alvin Ovi brothers benches there, and the majority of the people that didn't have chairs were standing behind that bench. It was actually Lions Club members that were sitting on there. It wasn't necessarily facing, facing the thing, but they were elderly folks, didn't have a chair. It was easier for them to sit down. The people behind him were sitting. These benches are only four feet long. Yes, they are back if you're sitting in a low chair, but if you sat in this chair, I could see over the top of the bench. Concern, but not necessarily a major concern in my eyes.
Okay.
And I think oftentimes the congregational church, when they do their popcorn and cotton candy set up right in that loop kind of behind town hall, near where that bench would be, and so there is an additional connection to kind of the congregational church and their, their outreach that, that Ron served quite a bit um also.
Yeah.
All right, made a lot of sense to me, right? There was not a lot of red lights to me when I went up and walked the common when I went to the office to speak about how do I go about asking permission to do it, you know?
I don't know, for me, tying it in, again, just where it's Boy Scouts and the brigade, I, I, I see tying it in, so down the road.
Yeah.
When this hopefully is a, a museum, to me, it makes sense to make it part of the story.
Randy, can you, let me clarify, are you looking to do the bench just for Ron Marsh or because he was part of the Boy Scouts?
Uh, the Boy Scouts were given memorial money, so we were determining how to use that money. It wasn't directed by the family of how we were going to physically use the money. So we had talked about um possibly something at Treasure Valley. We talked about doing a bench there. They're not in favor of a bench. If we do a bench, it has to be similar to the benches that are there. They probably give us commission to do a granite bench there if we chose to, but they actually needed picnic tables with Ron's name on it instead, so we went that direction with some of our funds. We talked about doing something on the Alleghash up in Maine that Ron had just recently hosted. Um, took a group of our scouts up there uh, a number of years ago and thoroughly enjoyed it. We talked about doing a service project up there, buying canoes or paddles to go up there for the project. And then we thought about a granite bench in the center of town to be kind of affiliated with the Lions Club and the church. It was talked, but I have not had an opportunity to, to actually talk about if the Lions Club or the church wanted to do something with us. They haven't reached out to us, but I haven't had an opportunity to reach out to any of the leaders there, so. It was more for Ron with, similar to John Sanji's, right? John Sanji is a prime example of someone that had passed away way too early in life, doing the exact same thing at his, you know? I'm sure there was controversy when, when that one particularly happened, and you hear more about it when I talked about a park bench of, well, don't be like Johnson, put it right there in front of the police station on state property. It's kind of a comment that I heard. No disrespect to, to, to where it is, but I understand it's there because of a police station, right? Ron has nothing on the common. We just thought it was a good place to tie into the existing benches that we had there.
Yeah. So it's not specific to his Boy Scout, Boy Scout service. It's Ron, that's one aspect of Ron.
And it's Ron's larger service to the community as a whole, as through the Lions and the, the congregational church and everything, so. I.
So regardless of how we make a decision, you're not ready to buy it anyways at this point because you don't have enough money, you say?
Potentially, that's the answer.
Okay.
If you tell me yes, I can have a bench there tomorrow.
Okay.
If you tell me no, then I can still have a bench there tomorrow. Just tell you that I was gonna do it, so.
So I would, for me personally, I, I personally kind of like the idea of the third one going up on the common. It's me, when I look at it from Main Street, I see that kind of completing that arc on the common um and, and kind of closing that, that area off. I would be a pain and want it to look similar to the other two, not necessarily identical, but the black, the polished, just for continuity's sake. Um, but I don't, that's my personal. I'm not sure.
That's one thing that we, the Boy Scouts have talked about. We didn't want to be different. We wanted to fit in, we wanted to look just like the others that were there, area.
And it would be the same if we approved it near the war memorial, that I would want it to look like what's exist, I would want it to look like what's existing at the war memorial.
Well, to, it, maybe it's something that we could say if, if the desired location is completing that three, y- you would need to know what the cost would be for something similar up there. What's the alternative? A different location, different design? If that would be the preference of the board.
The cost for a black granite bench to match that depends on the number of awards, but you're in that thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollar range.
So if we, we could do something like, if you want this location, this is the design, needs to be similar here, unless you choose an alternate location, you have more flexibility with what it would look like.
I don't.
That's originally why I came with two requests. If I came with two requests and you were kind enough to say, hey, we, Randy, do what you want, but it's gonna look to similar to what's there, right? And then we could have a discussion. It's about a thousand dollars difference between the black polish and the granite bench with, with no back to it, right? It's all about the back on it, right? So then we, the Boy Scouts could say, hey, you know what? We can do a little extra fundraising and do the four thousand dollar bench versus the three thousand dollar bench, or do something or partner with one of the others, right? And that, that's what my goal was. I understand your concerns and it's your decision to say, Randy, you know, you could put the black bench there, but that's all you got, and if you want your granite bench, go to the fire station or something, right? And that's, that's okay. I mean, and I would assume if we choose to go to the old fire station, I don't believe they got permission, so we could do it, we, I talked to the old fires station committee and, and do that there, so I don't need the selectmen's approval to do it over at that location. I mean, probably I do because it's really your property outside, just, but I don't think they got permission to do what they did over there, if I remember correctly, but, you know?
You remember correctly. Trust me, you do.
Remember, that's when the bond doors were open.
Yeah. You know, honestly, I, 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 I think Ron Marsh's thing is doing is right. Um, I can't frame in my own mind where the benches are gonna go. So I, I I think it's there. I, I, again, for me, I'd like to see, I'd like to see them design something of a Boy Scouts memoriam, if you will. Cause there's a lot more than just Ron Marsh who doca, who dedicated a lot to the Boy Scouts. And what the Boy Scouts did, whether there be a plaque there showing, I don't design a thing, but I'm just thinking how wonderful that could be as people go by showing, we're still a town that supports the Boy Scouts. So for me, I guess looking towards the church would be a favor for me, but I got, at this point, I, I got an opinion on where it's gonna go, where you want it.
I mean, I think that that's a, a, another conversation that, that needs to be brought, you know, so um, and, you know, Jen asked if the bench could be moved at a later point if, or maybe there's an additional bench or benches or, or whatever. Um, so I think.
I think Jen was right. We got this point here. Where does the bench go? One bench, where does it go?
So are we looking to do a motion to approve something or just provide some suggested guidance and then you can decide the path that you want? What's, what, what can you afford as far as the design?
Well, I think, I mean, I think, I, yeah, I think I would like a motion to kind of offer guidance as to, to everything, so that way it's the, the blessing of the board. And then if they come back and need to have additional conversation or whatever, um.
Does the board do what?
Well, that's the, that would be the motion to place the bench, what type of bench, where the bench would go, whatever, or not. I, but I would, I think it's a nice gesture and fits into Ron's community, community service and outreach piece of his life, which was a huge aspect of who he was, so.
You bring up a, a good point, too. You know, it's part of the brigade. That's a good spot.
That's the headquarters, right? So why, why would you want to celebrate him up where he, I, I would imagine would want to be?
So.
But I think he was more than, than the brigade is my.
That's what I was trying, that's what I was trying to clarify, too, is it just, it's the Boy Scouts that are putting up the memorial, but it's to honor his service mo, outside of Boy Scouts as well, so it's, that's why I don't necessarily disagree with having it on the common if that's
Yeah.
the desired location. So could we do something, I mean, and it sounds like there's less, there's more ambiguity on the lower common, what that would be, so could we say uh, you know, if, to put it up on the upper common, it has to match as closely as possible the existing benches, and this is the location, or it can go by the Fire Brigade with similar design there, and then anything beyond that come back for further discussion? come back for further discussion?
Do we?
I was, if I may, um, I, to simplify it, you could potentially make a motion to approve the installation of a bench contingent upon final design approval. So that, you know, Randy can go and see if he can make those funds work, and if he can, bring it back to the board and you guys say, yep, this works, or no, it doesn't. Um, but he will in the meantime at least have the board's approval, so it's not wasting his time to move forward on the design.
Well, and I think based on some of the very recent precedents that we've had, I think that Boy Scouts is probably looking for a little bit more of a, a approval versus based on final design approval, because they thought they had approval for other things that, that didn't end up having approval. So I think, I mean, I agree that it could be, but if, I think if we had a motion that said similar, you know, similar to current design and the location or whatever, or if it goes to the Fire Brigade, then it's, there's a little bit more leniency. So is there a motion?
I don't know, this is getting really complicated.
I know.
Or you don't?
So if I...
We're not recreating the wheel here.
So if I make a motion to say approval for a third bench on the upper common in similar design to what's already there, or again, similar design and placement at the Fire Brigade for the desired bench, anything beyond that would have to come back for future discussion. That, because that to me seems like that's what we have.
Gives them the, the flexibility pricing.
Again, if you find during your process, you've got other ideas or other locations, we can... I just, the, the lower common to me just seems like there's more up, up in the air as far as design and/or location for that, unless there's a specific one you had in mind.
I agree. We, we gotta, if we do it, my feeling is unless it's an absolute emergency, we don't move that thing in the future. The town looks at that and says, what, the Boy Scouts didn't know what they were doing? Select Board didn't know what they're doing? You pull it up afterwards? No, whatever it's gonna be, it really should be there. My feeling.
So I would look for a motion to have it as a third bench on the upper common to match the, the two existing black polished granites. Um, and if I, and then, um, I would look for that motion. If for some reason that's not contingent, it sounds like they would be going to the Fire Brigade, which is questionable if it needs approval or not. Um, so if we wanted to do...
So limited to just the upper common for now?
We can include it, or the second option could be, yeah, or the Fire, the Fire Brigade.
Okay, so I will officially make a motion to okay the granite bench in the upper common, black polished.
If you want to match the two Alvin Owey Brothers.
Which, which, okay. Okay, motion to approve similar design to the existing benches on the upper common in the location towards fifty-six, towards Palmagussit, or at the Fire Brigade. Again, similar design.
To match there.
To match benches of the benches at the Fire Brigade.
Is there a second?
I'll second with a question. We're doing all this as long as it doesn't end up on DOT land. You had mentioned that, Dick. And I don't want to get into a, you know, match with them or anything else. I know, but I, honest to God, I don't know. So I do, I want to go through and look at the signs and just, or just say, hey, you know, it's not our land. It's the town's land. It's the citizens' land. It's not mine. So I'm trying to be as careful for them as possible.
The War Memorial.
The what?
The War Memorial in front of the common.
Yeah.
Is probably on state property that that grant walkway just recently put in is on state pro- uh, state property probably, correct?
Yeah.
That road is fifty lengths wide or fifty feet wide from the yellow line, but all of that, no. The, the neon sign is on state property. John Sanji's is on state property. I mean, you can do what you want, but...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, that black bench is back farther.
Yeah.
Fifty-six, to the best of my knowledge, is narrower. That, we could probably ask one of the surveyors out there now, but not exactly how much they own, but...
I don't want to make a big issue. I'm just, you had mentioned something, that's why I brought it up. I didn't know if you know the, the lines that were there.
I think the state land property, or state property mine question is ambiguous at best and
Okay.
a lot of unanswered questions that we may never get answers to.
I think it should be answered soon, and soon Central Mass gets moved into there, we'll probably have some meetings, and I hope to go down there and speak to the director and, and we'll follow up.
So I guess if that's the case, that's the only reason it would be moved.
So we have a motion and a second.
So I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, um, for their bench up on the upper common. And if that's not feasible, then the, um, Fire Brigade. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Roll call. We have a motion and a second.
Just can I ask for a little bit of, of, the two benches that were put there? I believe the two benches that were put by the War, the War Memorial, right, was put there, part of that Eagle Scout project, I believe. And if they look like that bench with Ron's name on it, which it wasn't, are you opposed to that? I would assume yes, that...
At the Veterans Memorial?
Yes. But they're not gonna look out of place.
That's not, it's, if you're a veteran, it runs very deep. Okay, and if you're not a veteran, not, doesn't sit well with veterans. That's all. Nothing personal. I think Ron, you know, as far as the Boy, that's if you're a veteran, that runs deep. Okay?
Two motion and a second. Roll call. Harry.
Aye.
Aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for that lively discussion, guys. Congratulations. Um, moving on, we have the fiscal year twenty-four reappointments. Um, we had a few outstanding from our previous meeting. Um, whoever does them, I have one addition. Um, we have a, the dispatch leads on to the, um, Insurance Commission is going to switch to Jody McGinnis for a one-year term. Whoever does the reading, if we can include this, um, into...
If I may just add, um, because it's a select board appointment, if you can accept the resignation of Rachel Crompton and appoint Jody McGinnis for a one-year term.
Same motion or separate?
Same motion is fine.
And it's Rachel Crompton?
Yes.
To... And can you confirm for me, are we appointing?
So we can do kind of how we did last time, um, we'll do Agricultural Commission, Randy for three years expiring and, and Dick for one year expiring.
And go down that way. With the names and then the town administrators, the position.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, so motion to approve Randy Jordan as full member, three-year term, expiring twenty-twenty-six, and Richard Williams, alternate member, one-year term, expiring twenty-twenty-four to the Agricultural Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Motion to approve Peter Crane as full member, uh, Peter Crane and Christian Santillo as full members for three-year terms, expiring in twenty-twenty-six for Cable Advisory Committee.
Second.
Harry.
Aye. Second aye.
Matt's a re- cruise.
Uh, ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Uh, motion to approve Kate Gervais uh, as full member, three-year term, expiring in twenty-twenty-six to Earthworks Board.
Second.
And this is the ag comm appointment through, no?
No, she's just on as a regular. Okay, okay, thank you. Sorry for that clarification. Um, any other questions?
Nope. Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Um, motion to approve Jeffrey Gibbs as full member, three-year term, expiring in twenty-twenty-six for Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Okay, motion to approve the town administrator and his or her designee for one-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-four for ADA coordinator.
Second.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Uh, motion to approve the town administrator, not his or her designee, just town administrator.
Correct.
Okay, uh, motion to approve the town administrator for one-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-four for a WCRTA representative.
Second.
Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
Motion to approve the town administrator for a one-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-four for a representative to watch use of Earth Day.
Second.
Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
And motion to approve Wayne Magnum as full member with three-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-six to the WRSD Audit Advisory Committee.
Second.
Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye.
And one more, uh...
Accept the resignation first.
Motion to accept the resignation of Rachel Crompton and appoint Jody McGinnis to a one-year term expiring in twenty-twenty-four to the IAC.
Second.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye. Thank you. Thank you to everyone who stepped up and volunteered for these positions. Um, you're free to get signed in at Town Hall with Anita or Ben. Um, and I'm, I know there's still outstanding openings, um, for a lot of, for a number of our boards and commissions. So if you're looking to get involved, please look online, reach out to Tameka and Austin or any of us. Thank you. Uh, we have our buy recycled policy. It would be our second reading. We, Austin introduced us to it, um, last meeting. Um, and essentially adopting this, most of what we already do, um, opens this up for a number of additional grant funding opportunities. So Austin, Tameka, I don't think you, you've received any questions, comments, concerns from us or the public, so, um, is there any discussion here with the board now?
None for me.
I think one of the questions, just for the public, Harry, that you had was to ensure that the cost, it wasn't going to be cost prohibitive for us to, to adopt this policy. And I think Austin addressed that with us as a whole, um, and that it needs to be economically feasible for us to make that switch, so.
And Austin did a very good job of explaining it, so.
It was more for the public, just...
And most of the paper materials that we're buying anyways are already within that standard. We just don't have a policy, which is one of the requirements for this grant, so we're probably already buying it. So if it's more expensive or not, we're already paying it.
So if the board's, um, amenable, I would like a motion to, um, adopt the policy, um, as written.
I will make a motion to adopt the recycled product procurement policy as written.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second aye.
Matt's an aye.
Ledger aye.
Y'all aye.
White man aye. Um, moving on to new business, we have a number of one-day liquor license applications for, um, few different events, so let's take them one by one. I was just looking at them to see, um, the dates of everything. So the first in my packet is a one-day liquor license application for July third and fourth for Dolce Vita Catering on Town Common. And it would be to serve beer and wine only.
So you just want a motion for each one?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for Dolce Vita Catering um, for July third and fourth on the Town Common.
Sorry, second?
I'd like to make a comment first, if I can.
So we have a second for, for, but we can, that opens it up for conversation, so by all means...
Second, you seconded.
Joan seconded.
Okay. I just want to make note that this is a private organization that is willing to pay the sixty dollars a day. Okay?
And she's coming in as a private organization, not with any sort of nonprofit. Yep.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Um, and the time, just for clarification, is eleven AM to eleven PM. I don't know if we need that in the motion.
Okay, I'll say it next time, yeah.
Uh, eleven PM seems to be the standard for when everybody breaks...
Do you need the additional, isn't it a separate? Didn't that come into play with the milk room? Did they need a separate license or something for after eleven PM?
That was only, um, for their full liquor license at the farm, um, not specific to a one-day liquor license.
Yeah, check with, check with the chief, I said, eleven o'clock's a long time for people waking up on the fourth. He goes, never had a problem. I said, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. I think we, question that was clarified, or a comment that was clarified, for sure?
Good. Uh, second aye.
Matt's an aye.
White man aye.
Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application on June eighth? Oh, I'm sorry, July, oh, today's, sorry, July one, July third and July fourth from twelve PM to eleven PM, uh, for the Rutland Fire Brigade Lilac Hedge Farm, um, on the Rutland Town Common.
And just for clarification, if they're coming in under a nonprofit, they have listed beer, wine, cider, seltzer, and mixed drinks. Um, in order to serve anything other than beer and wine, it needs to come in under a nonprofit. That's per MGL.
Yes, um, and they've also requested to have the fee waived, so if the board agrees to that, I would ask that you please include that in the motion.
Okay, it must, I, I don't see a fee waive recommendation here, but they did say that afterward.
So when Chief Knight put it into the viewpoint system or online permitting system, he put a note in that asked that the select board waive the fee.
Okay.
For both this and the seven saws application.
I do see on the seven saws that it says request to...
Yeah, since we have someone here who maybe can from the Fire Brigade, Lilac Hedge Farm, on this one, you are requesting officially to have that sixty dollars waived a day?
Randy, Randy Jordan, Captain of the Rutland Fire Brigade. And in the past, the fee has always been waived because it's been used as a fundraiser for the Rutland Fire Brigade.
Um, I do have some comments on that when we get to that point.
Um, so we have a, a motion, we haven't talked about the fee waiving yet. I know historically, um, since I've been on the board, the board has waived the fee for nonprofits that are requesting, um, the one-day liquor licenses for anyone not coming in under the one-day, under, or with a nonprofit, as a nonprofit. Um, it, it, it has not been waived. So that's just the, the background historical piece there, um...
Well, to the chair, I remember this came up at the last board, we talked about it. Rutland has a history of basically waiving everything.
I, I know.
And which makes no sense.
No sense.
Why even have a fee? It's only sixty dollars. Uh, you know, you can't waive for one and not the rest. To me, it's, it's, it's more formality fee, I, I...
Well, my, my concern here is that we are bringing private enterprises into the Rutland, who we grant them the right to sell liquor and so forth. They pay their sixty dollars. This thing of nonprofit drives me crazy, because under a section five oh one C three, the reason you have a nonprofit is so you don't pay taxes on the income. So here you are, getting all this money, you're not paying taxes, and now you want the town to waive the sixty-dollar fee because you are bringing in a profit organization under a nonprofit status. So being a nonprofit to me is not the key to the city. It's not, you, you don't get the key to the city. And this is nothing against the Brigade, this is against any nonprofit out there, that I have a problem with that. And I think unless Lilac Hedge is not making any money and they're in trouble, I don't think a hundred and eighty bucks is gonna kill them. Not at all. So they give it to you, under your name, they give it to us, that's fine. But I think there should be a playing field out there that is fair for businesses who are willing to pay, and now you're using your exemption for a profit organization not to pay. So that's my concern. Yeah, I know it's been done in the past, but that doesn't mean it gets done now, under this board. So I mean, I've got not just this one, I got the problem with the other ones too. Yes.
Karen Norwell.
I'm sorry, through the chair.
One forty-nine Palmagussett Road. Uh, the Fire Brigade does give back to the town quite a bit. They have given, um, I believe cameras once upon a time. They've given the fi- uh, the frozen water boat rescue. They've given or are in the process of giving, uh, uh, some kind of device that if by chance a firefighter is on a second floor, they can jump out and it's safe for them. So they don't just land on the ground. What, they've given a lot back to the town for when the town hasn't been able to afford to buy the appropriate things that the firemen need. So although they're not paying taxes, they're giving it back to the town. The charter, I believe, is to give back to the firemen.
You know, I looked over the last five annual reports and I can tell you what they gave back to the town. I'm kind of disappointed. All right, wasn't a lot of money. Around a thousand, fifteen hundred, one year was twenty-four hundred. And yet they collect about, well, the, their net assets in two thousand and twenty was almost ninety thousand dollars. So sixty bucks? Seriously?
That's not a lot to ask.
So, and I understand, they can give the money back. It just let Lilac, let Seven Sawz donate the money to them. They'll still have the money to give back to the town. I'm not arguing that. I'm, I'm talking about fiscal responsibility in the town that lets level the playing field here. So that was my comment on that.
Well, and to add to your point here, if I may, um, one nonprofit contributing to the town doesn't mean that all of them are. See, you, one may, and you may waive the fee for them and everybody else that's a nonprofit is going to expect it and not necessarily contribute the same.
And does Milk Room pay the sixty dollars every week for the town concert?
Yes, we collected six hundred dollars from them for the ten Friday concerts. And we also collected the sixty dollars for their, uh, per day for the Fourth of July events as well.
So whether it was food or alcohol, they paid the sixty bucks. So, uh, and that's, a- a- and I've got no love or dislike for any retail organization out there. That's not what I'm trying to say. Okay, so I, I, I think that if you still want to do it, you should be able to pay the sixty bucks.
Agreed.
So we have a motion and the motion did not include the fee waiver. Is there a second?
I'll second.
If I, if I may, um, if the board is not going to waive the fee, I would kindly ask that you make the motion that you approve it contingent upon receipt of the fee no later than June thirtieth.
No later than June thirtieth?
The event will take place on July first.
So I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license application for July first, third, and fourth from twelve PM to eleven PM, uh, Rutland Fire Brigade and Lilac Hedge Farm, uh, the event up at the Rutland Town Common. I'm sorry, say that again, to, to.
Um, contingent upon.
Contingent on.
Fee of the fee by June thirtieth. Correct.
And Tamika, will you reach out to, um?
Yes, I will. Yep, I will communicate with, I will fly that catch and seven saws to let them know. Um, and there is an option for them to pay it online to make it easier to set up too.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments, questions, concerns? Harry?
Uh, second I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger I?
Yeah, I.
Waitman I.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license, uh, on July third, two thousand and twenty-three, four PM to nine PM. The applicant was Seth Knight on behalf of the Rutland Fire Brigade. That would be contingent upon fee payment by June thirtieth. Um.
Tom, do you just mind mentioning that that's for Seven Sawz?
Seven Sawz, yeah, for Seven Sawz Brewery, uh, for, uh, for behind the fire station at two forty Main Street Rutland.
And that's a wine and malt only? Just.
Okay, wine and malt. Second?
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry?
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Uh, ledger I?
Yeah, I.
Waitman I.
All righty, this is contingent as well, right? All righty, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license, July twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, from twelve PM to five PM on behalf of the Rutland Fire Brigade and Seth Knight, contingent upon the fee, uh, by June thirtieth. Also, um, Seven Sawz Brewery, and that is going to be at two eighty-five Main Street, the parking lot at Naquag Elementary School for wine and malt.
Is there a second?
Is that contingent?
Contingent, yes, by, yep, pay.
Okay.
And this is, is there a second?
Yes.
And this is conti- even though it's a later date in Ju- July for the event, it's still contingent on the June thirtieth. That way we just keep everything consistent.
It would be easier that way than to kind of leave it hanging out there and then it gets up through the cracks, so.
Okay, yep, I second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry?
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger I?
Yeah, I.
Waitman I.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Adding this as a topic to include in the updated financial policies.
And I think that this is another one of those pendulum swings based on the board because I think historically before the, the past few years, everybody paid the fee. We didn't have nearly the number. Um, and then it seems like as the financial, um, situation in the town has gotten a little bit tighter and tighter, there's been more and more conversation about this as well. Um, and so, like I said, I think it's a, a pendulum swing, swing with the board. And it sounds like just for the public that this board is, um, less amenable to, to considering that fee waiver than the previous board. So for that expectation, just. Um, moving on, we have the special legislation for town clerk's position. Um, we have a document that, um, we need to send to, uh, our state legislature to get the, uh, um, the town clerk's position changed to an elected, or to an appointed position at the retirement of our existing, um, uh, chair, uh, town clerk. Um, just one comment.
Yeah, your H. I'm sorry.
Um, so, um, this was voted on at the annual town meeting to make the, um, town clerk position an appointed position, meaning advertised and hired, um, once the current town clerk, um, resigns or loses an election. Um, so at the end of the current town clerk's service. Um, so is there any questions, comments, concerns about this? Um, and if not, then I would take a motion to sign the document and submit it.
I'll make a motion that the board sign the document for submission to the state on the change in the status of the process for the town clerk.
Second?
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry?
Second I.
Matt's an eye.
Yeah, I.
Waitman I.
Do you have the original that we signed?
Yeah, it's in the red folder.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
But we might have to, yeah.
Is there a mistake on it?
Yeah, my H is missing. I'll, my name. I actually saw it and I totally spaced on emailing it to, to you at the end. No, that's okay. It happens. Okay, go.
I was gonna say I can have Lauren send me a new copy if members want to stop up to sign. Um, I don't know.
Yeah. Um, moving on, we have a notice of intent to sell chapter land. Um, this was received by our office, uh, June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three by hand delivery. Um, it's, uh, land to be sold by Carol Minor. It's fifty-three plus or minus acres on Emerald Road. Um, the board has scheduled a public hearing for July tenth. This is part of the sixty-one A process. Um, Tamika, I assume the, the notice came in appropriately and it went appropriately to all boards and commissions?
It did, yes. Um, it was delivered appropriately. Um, it's before those specific boards and commissions for their review so that they can get a memo to you guys before the hearing. For anyone in the public that's interested, the information is posted on the website on the select board page. Um, it's been published in the newspaper and a butter notification has gone out to folks within three hundred feet of the property.
And I know it went in through the appropriate, um, I think it has to go select board, planning board, um, conservation?
Yep.
Um, did we disseminate it to agriculture, to the ag com? And I know there had been a conversation in the past about going to R D I C, potentially even like economic development now that they exist just as, um, other groups or entities that may be interested in.
It's only been disseminated so far to their required boards and commissions, which you're correct on those. The only other one is the Board of Assessors. Um, so it did get disseminated to them. It has not been sent to others for their comment.
So I think in the past, we, I, I've appreciated having it go, go to the other, um, boards and commissions mentioned just as, um, not that they, just to provide feedback or, um, they may have ideas or, or, um, opportunities to preserve or not preserve the land. So, um, I would like to see it go to ag com, um, R D I C and economic development also. I don't know if anybody else has any other boards and commissions that they would feel would be beneficial to have, um, see it. And if they would like to provide, um, input back to the board as well. So this is just a notice, um, that we have received it, um, and it's been received appropriately. And we do have the hearing scheduled for July tenth. So anyone that's public or otherwise that's listening um, and wants to provide any feedback or comments to our office, um, they can reach out to Tamika Austin or.
I do have a question.
Sure.
I have a question on the size of the land. Dick, are you familiar with that? All fifty-three acres is up for sale for six hundred thousand?
That is my understanding. That's the way that I read the.
Okay, you too, Dick?
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Wetlands on it, so.
What's that?
There's wetlands on it.
Uh, uh, you know, that, it, some of these things ran through my mind and six hundred thousand for, so it might end up being forty acres instead of fifty-three. I don't know. So that's why I was asking on that.
So they currently use approximately sixteen acres for, we've hang. No? What's that cleared vacant land that's on the corner there?
Seven acres of corn.
Seven, okay, seven.
Yeah. I don't know how much more. I mean, I think it's a beautiful piece of property right there.
So seven out of fifty-three acres is usable?
I don't know how much is usable. Uh, that's, you know, it's kind of the corner of the lot that they're using for agriculture.
For the public's knowledge, um, the person that is interested in purchasing the property intends to develop it for single-family homes.
Okay.
Develop it for single fa- single-family homes?
Yes, correct.
Are they A N R?
Uh, they're, they're nothing right now.
You can't A N R until you own it.
Well, you know what I mean. Okay.
Okay, so that's the information for the public. Um, so thank you for, for all of that. And just to make sure, yeah. Um, moving on, we have the bylaw review. So, um, that ad hoc bylaw subcommittee has been working diligently on the bylaws. Um, and we would like to try to get some dates to start going through, um, their, some of the bylaws that they've worked on in bulk, um, so that we can get them moving forward. Um, so I think it's probably going to be a larger conversation than, um, we would want to add into our meeting, uh, our normal scheduled meetings. Um, I think in the past, we've done them on the off Mondays, but I know that the off Mondays tend to be a little challenging for, um, some of the board at times. So I don't know, it seemed like the Thursday was okay in the past for us also. Um, I don't know if there's any dates in July that we can look to, um, to get something on the calendar to work with the ad hoc bylaw subcommittee. And I think the hope, um, Peter, if I'm not mistaken, was to kind of look at the, the first chunk, kind of the general government first chunk of bylaws. Was that your?
That's correct. I figure it'll take an hour and a half or so to go through the general provisions and the general government sections. It's, uh, from there, after that is financial, which I believe you'll also want to review. And out of chapter four, the next one, the only one that's really important, in my opinion, for you to review is town council, but there is benefit to you reviewing public consumption with the changes to that, but the other two are minimal. And I think from there, you can decide which ones you are interested in reviewing as a group. Uh, and obviously we take input from individuals in any event. So my guess is you, we probably have two hour and a half or so meetings to get through the things that you absolutely have to review in depth.
So next week, um, is the, the week of the fourth. And I think FinCom has a meeting scheduled for July sixth. So, um, we meet on July tenth for our regular scheduled board meeting.
Can you do the twentieth?
Um, I was gonna say we could do the thirteenth, the twentieth. Um, I don't know how vacation, summer vacation plans play in. Um, the seven, the Monday, the seventeenth isn't off.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I shouldn't open my mouth. I'm on vacation that week. My wife will kill me.
Um, I don't know if we wanted to do two meetings in one week and the thirteenth, Thursday, the thirteenth. Um, Tom, you're out the, the week of the sixteenth, it sounds like.
Yeah, and I can't do the thirteenth. I have, um.
Okay, yes.
You might want to ask those who work versus those who don't work if they have the space available.
Well, I think, I mean, yes.
Not being funny, but yeah, you know, because we're flexible.
Right.
Little more than the average.
Is it something where if I need to, I can attend via Zoom and still participate?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Austin, Tamika, I don't, I mean, I know Tamika, if you're unable to make it, you can usually catch the recording at some point. I don't know what, I don't want to keep you out another night if it can be avoided.
That's fine. I'm happy to attend. My only commitment is that every other Monday, but I'm available the other days, Wednesday, Thursday.
And Austin, I know.
I'm here.
But we have stuff we need to get done, so that's the.
If it's any, uh, Wednesdays are completely free in this room throughout the month of July, right now.
Twelfth.
Twelfth?
Um.
That's enough.
Yeah, Wednesdays for a couple of weeks for me.
Can we look at the week of the twenty-fourth? So the twenty-fourth would be our board meeting week. Um, we would meet on the twenty-fourth. Um.
Not the twenty-seventh because we're going to the Woo Sox.
The twenty, twenty-sixth might be master plan. I don't know. We, we don't have it scheduled yet. It depends on the updates from. We can schedule, and if I can't make it, I can't make it. It's not the end of the world. Uh, meaning master plan, not, not making. Um, do we want to just have Tamika kind of create a doodle poll and really try to look? Look.
The little thing, Harry.
Wednesdays and Thursdays in July? Does that, is that, I mean, it sounds like it's not ideal for, for some of us at some points. Um.
Has to be July.
I mean, it doesn't have to be.
The sooner we start.
Right.
There's, there's a lot of backend process that happens after you're done with the review. The early ones have been through the complete review, so there's not a lot there. But the later chapters, there's a lot of work to do, and so the longer they're put off, the lo- the, the, the later it, we can possibly have, have it at a town meeting.
Thirty-first.
I mean, I think that, I don't know if the off Mondays are feasible or not for others. Seventeenth and or the thir- well, seventeenth it doesn't work, but the thirty-first, um, if that works, or going into the first week of August.
Does the twenty-fourth work?
Twenty-fourth is a regular scheduled meeting. Yeah, tenth and, and twenty-fourth are a regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah, that's right. I got it.
I could probably do the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh at Wednesday or Thursday. Like, and I, I might need to connect via Zoom.
Jen, we can't do the twenty-seventh.
Sorry, the twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth or the thirty-first.
Over here, yeah.
Twenty-sixth, you're gone?
No, so twenty-seventh of the Woo Sox.
Yes.
I'll be going for that.
Does twenty-sixth tentatively work for everyone?
Yep.
Is that more preferable than thirty-first? Mondays the thirty, Mondays the thirty-first?
Yes, no. They're both are okay for me.
Either, either or.
Austin, do you have a preference? Or an unpreference?
Yeah, might, might I propose both and then you can just get them both done?
I was gonna say, maybe can we get both on the calendar and that way, if we have tentatively.
Just get them done.
Yeah. Because I think going into August, we're gonna hit vacations also. I don't know.
Yeah.
Does that work, Peter, for you? Are you around the twenty-sixth and the thirty-first?
Yes.
Okay.
So if if through the board, Peter.
Yes, sir.
Those two dates, will you think we'll be able to get two sections done if it's an hour and a half? I mean, I'm gonna think we're doing three hours in one night.
No, I I I would not advise that. There's this, this will just fill your brain with more information than you could want to know. But there's some things that you really need to look at in depth, and so I wouldn't wanna break those apart. After that, I mean, I, Harry, I heard you suggest onesie, twosie a meeting. We could do things like that. There might be a couple more we wanna pull out special. Scenic Rose just comes to mind as one that's might be more interesting for a more in-depth review. But um but again, we could do onesie, twosie at regular meetings and just keep cycling through them. I think that that can work pretty well, especially if you say you don't want to do every single bylaw. I keep picking on unregistered motor vehicles as something that I'm not sure there's a lot of value in spending time on.
I think, I mean.
There are some that make sense. There are some that don't to you.
And we had talked about trying to do um bylaw and policy, like one a meeting or or so, just to
Mm-hmm.
get going and kind of move everything forward. So I think that's.
That's greatly. You bring up a good point that if we're doing the bylaw and there's something missing, how can we tailor a policy to it or vice versa?
So.
So you'll be there.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll plan for two, the twenty-sixth and the thirty-first. Um, and then we can see how how we leave. And we'll have Zoom access if Zoom is needed. It's totally fine. It's not an issue at all.
Absolutely, we'll do that.
Um, and I envision them being a little bit more informal, kind of similar to how our our um goal setting was. Um, maybe not, not with a wall chart and everything, but a little bit more laid back and relaxed.
Mm-hmm.
Does that work? Okay.
So out here, tables out here, as opposed to up, I mean, it's up to you.
I think.
Talk about it, think about it, I mean, oh.
Okay.
Is the, whatever corrections you've made, they're already online?
Yes.
Okay.
How about the background, the sanitary? That sounds good.
Um, so, so, and just for the public, everything is online on um ad hoc bylaw subcommittee.
Committee, not subcommittees.
Ad hoc bylaw committee.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, there's too many committees, sorry. Um.
Well, it's confusing because there's the planning board bylaw subcommittee, which just screws everybody up.
So everything is online, um, and we will absolutely welcome public input at those meetings as well or ahead of those meetings. Um, hopefully, it's not, it's an opportunity for select board to really go through stuff, and so it doesn't turn into a public information session, but it, they'll be open to the public and any comments to come in ahead of those meetings for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have the library board, library board of trustees. We have a resignation, we have a resignation um that was submitted um by Kathy Murphy, and we are in um in our hands is a one-year appointment for uh Richard, Richard Lopez. Um, and per M G L, um, we are allowed to fill this position, even though it's an elected position, until the next um annual town election, which is scheduled for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, um, at which time the person would need to run for uh for the position. And that M G L is M G L, chapter forty-one, section eleven, if anyone's interested. So I would take a motion to accept or to appoint Rich Lo- Richard Lopez for one year uh um terminate on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the library board of trustees.
You want a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that um we appoint, we appoint at this point, Richard Lopez to serve as library trustee with the remaining of the term of the individual who, what's your name?
Kathy Murphy.
For Kathy, to fill Kathy Murphy's seat for the remainder of the year uh till the election of twenty twenty-four on the uh library trustee committee, the library committee. Is that correct?
Library board of trustees.
Library board of trustees, thank you.
And Paul seconded.
Second, thank you.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Harry.
Uh, second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Wait, my eye. With appreciation, I know that's a a step in the.
I know Richard Lopez, he's a good guy.
I was gonna say, it's a new name, so it's nice to get the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we have a building department um has asked us to declare some equipment as surplus for auction. Um, we have an inter-office memorandum. Um, Austin, do you wanna?
Sure. So I think there's some momentum on the board's recent declaration of the wonderful impala uh as surplus uh for the purposes of disposing at a public auction. So um you kind of look around town hall or any of the buildings, there's a lot of stuff that could possibly be value uh for others. So uh it's my understanding that the building department purchased a um some equipment for the wait and sealer, uh wait and measures, uh town sealer position. Uh, and then we actually ended up contracting with the state uh for those services. Uh, and this equipment was no longer um useful. So looking to declare that as surplus for the purposes of selling in a future auction. And I will just say, uh, in addition to this equipment, um, I think we have some major equipment at D P W that is no longer serving a useful purpose for their operations. So you can expect probably a lot of these requests uh over the next few months. Um, and then likely, we'll compile all this surplus property into kind of one major auction uh for all town property.
Through the chair, where does the money go for this?
General fund.
General fund. It doesn't go to D P W.
Correct.
There's a free cash, right? Like, most likely, already certified to free cash and then.
And we'll keep a tally of that because I guess I look at D P W that needs some stuff, and if we're selling their assets, we could, should be using that money to replace some of their assets. So I didn't know if we were gonna keep track of that.
Yeah, I mean, so I've had that conversation with virtually all town departments when I'm trying to get them to get rid of some stuff. Um, and yeah, that's a valid argument that they uh, you know, they have some equipment, they like to use that to purchase new supplies. Um, unfortunately, that's rooted in national law that it has to fall. So um, you know, that could be uh in the form of a policy um to be written in a way that um you know, free cash that is the product of an auction must be used for the purposes or appropriated for the purposes of, you know, capital for those respective departments. So something that we can talk about, but.
The reason I say that is, you and I have had discussions and I've talked about return on investment for each department commission looking at it, and it's hard to track where the money is coming in versus what the expenses are. So if we could allocate that, that would even help me look at a better understanding of the return on investments for each of those issues. So to be fair, that's all.
So, yeah, and just one final thing as well, um, on all of our surplus auctions, so that the program we're intending to use, uh, it's a very popular program that's used or service that's used across, um, well, not just the Commonwealth, but especially New England. Um, and for purposes of record-keeping, we have to keep all of that. Um, so we can certainly put together a spreadsheet and kind of maintain a tally of all the equipment and what respective department it's coming from, so.
It might also be some incentive for the departments to regularly go through their equipment to see what can we get rid of, yeah.
Okay, um, so I would take a motion to declare the um five-gallon test measure carrying case um as surplus and allow it to go to auction.
Make a motion to declare the, a five-gallon E-three test measure and metal carrying case uh packed in a single box. Price amount, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars um to be put into surplus.
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Just to clarify, is this the amount that you would be getting for it, or is this something different?
Uh, so.
This invoice.
That's the approximate value. Because it's brand new, uh, we'll likely place that as the minimum bid value and hope that people pay more for it. But it's brand new, hasn't been used, right?
It's brand new.
No, as long as it's in the memo, we have an approximate.
Okay.
Really? Just a couple of years?
These two voted. Uh, Ledger, I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Wait, my eye. Um, just to update on our select board goals and objectives meeting that was held last week, Thursday on June twenty-second. Thought it was a really productive, long, two-and-a-half-hour meeting. Um, I am really thankful and and appreciative of everyone coming out and bringing the ideas and the conversation um and dialogue that ensued. Um, I think Austin has taken the, the our kind of ideas back, and a lot of them came from Austin's memo to us originally. Um, and hopefully, we will get them on either our June tenth or June, July tenth or July twenty-fourth um agenda to to hopefully ratify, and then we can begin um concerted efforts towards them. Anybody have any uh comments about the the meeting or anything?
Well, like I said, I I I've been telling everybody that I think this board is taking a tremendous advantage or leap forward in doing the things we're doing. And everybody's had good comments, so it's like a, not spreading the word, but you know, I think we're looking at a different direction like we had all talked about initially in the meeting. So I think it was good.
Thank you. Um, anyone have any future agenda items in their head right now?
Excuse me, through the chair, we had spoken, I can't remember when we spoke, but we spoke about obviously the traffic situation in the center of town. I don't know with the new D P W director coming in, maybe trying to look into something like that, either traffic light or rotary or.
Yeah, so I think the items that were requested at a previous meeting, I've got a kind of a list tentatively. I think we have a spreadsheet already of of items that, whether it's timing, or we need to do a little bit more research to present them appropriately. So that's definitely one of them as well.
And hopefully, next meeting or within the next meeting or two, we'll have some appointments, uh, D P W director and town planner, and then we can, um, I know some of our goals and objectives were based around those two positions as well, so having some
Yeah.
some department heads there. Helps. Um, any correspondence? I don't think there's been anything. Um, any other business?
I might make a comment.
Yeah.
Paul brought these in. Um, I've had requests from people out of town asking me how to get this thing or where the agenda is. So I just wanna show it. It's an orange pamphlet for the town citizens out there. I picked mine up at the library. So if you happen to be there, pick one up. It's really great. The uh Fourth of July committee, I guess, did these up. They did a great job of it. So just wanted to let you know that they're available for you.
And I think, thank you. That's, and I think a lot of the local businesses have them also. Um, and I think Austin just put everything on our town homepage. So for any out-of-towners that maybe can't get into town but wanna see what the schedule is, they should be able to click through the town website also, so.
I mean, I only had basically one request out of everybody I talked to.
Yep.
Fourth of July fireworks. That was it.
We have chicken barbecue tickets available.
What's that?
Chicken barbecue tickets are available for the fire brigade.
Okay.
And those are available at the Rutland Marketplace, the Rutland Pharmacy, and online.
Okay. Takeout?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I think the strawberry festival for the Lions Club is also available. So good, so. Thank you. We have our future meetings, our regular board meetings are July tenth and twenty-fourth, August seventh. Um, and then tonight, we just added the twenty, July twenty-sixth and thirty-first for bylaw review. Um, and then I would take a motion to adjourn to executive session um for the reason listed below. Not to to adjourn for, not to return to open.
No, you do want to return to open session.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, to return to open session.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session, followed by, I'm sorry, what was it? Followed by.
Reason.
For reason number three.
For reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair, so declares. Number one, discussion and review, revisions to D P W union contract previously agreed.
To return.
Uh, to return, followed by to return to open session.
You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Harry.
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Oh, wait, my eye. Uh, we are returning to open session, the Rutland Select Board at eight thirty P M on Monday, June twenty-sixth, here in the lower lot, uh, lower level of the Rutland Public Library. Um, I would accept a motion to approve the revisions to D P W contract as discussed.
I make a motion to approve the revisions to the D P W contract as discussed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none.
Second and I.
Matt's and I.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Wait, my eye. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
One thing real quick, I meant to mention in my announcements, um, that the town offices will be closed on, obviously, the Fourth of July. And also, I'm intending to close um a little earlier on the third to allow for a setup of festivities around town hall. So leaving, allowing town staff to leave a little early.
Thank you. Fair enough. Questions, comments, concerns? All right, most, I would accept a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Ledger, I.
Yeah, I'm an I.
Wait, my eye. We are adjourned.